Uh, go call please.
Councilmember Barnard?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Tucker?
Here.
And Mayor Alpera.
Here. Stand for the pledge allegiance. Chief Blasner, you lead us please.
Pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America. And to the very body of our nation. One nation, America, founded in the middle of the East.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, your opinion in case you had a public hearing scheduled for this evening on some land use matters, uh, the application of related to those drawn. We have, and by that time, it's public notice already been given, so for that reason, if you're carrying on your agenda, uh, with the purposes of adjusting the agenda, uh, because it's our suggestion that you not go forward with the public hearing, that I see one of the, uh, vote from the agenda. And to the extent, uh, there are members of the public that wish to address you on that, uh, they would have, I would provide that opportunity in public hearings.
Okay. With that, okay, we'll, uh, catch that on this. When we come to that, we'll just pull that item. So with that, uh, moving on, any city attorney important, close, uh, session actions?
Yes, the council met in closed session, discussed one public employee, um, performance evaluation related to the city manager. The council, uh, no reportable action, the council discussed one significant exposure to litigation, direction was given to council. The council discussed, um, City of Imperial versus PCG Mayfield, and direction was given to, uh, council. Also, uh, the council added with its work bits vote, a discussion of the old post office and price and terms related to negotiation, and of the APN that was on the agenda or, or added to the agenda was given. That is my report.
Very much for that. Uh, with that, we'll move up to public comment. Uh, there's a limit of three minutes for anyone wishing to address city council on these matters. Or matters not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address city council concerning any item within council jurisdiction, please be able to be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record, the mayor reserves rights to place a time limit of three minutes to person's presentation. It is requested the longer presentations be submitted to the city clerk's, uh, clerk's office in writing forty hours before the meeting. Any public comments? And clerk, did we, yes.
One thing I did neglect is to mention, uh, as you probably know, the, the microphones are still not operational, and so speakers that descend from the ceiling are what's picking up. I'm told that, uh, in reviewing the last meeting, that counsel is being picked up well by that microphone, but that staff is not, and I would assume the same might be true for the public. So we would, we would ask folks in addressing the council that they remember to keep their voice, how they, uh, use your outside voice, to, uh, uh, address the council, so the, uh, report can be made.
Thank you. And for any, uh?
No public comments.
Any public comments? Okay. So with that, we'll move on to special presentations, the proclamation for National, uh, Cancer Prevention Month. So with that, I do have a proclamation for, uh, National Cancer Prevention Month. And so with that, I'll read the proclamation, it says February, nationally recognizes Cancer Prevention Month, and serves as a crucial reminder to raise awareness about cancer prevention, and whereas early detection, lifestyle modifications, community awareness play a crucial role in preventing cancer, and whereas education and about risk factors, regular screenings and healthy behaviors can reduce the incidence of cancer, and whereas City of Imperial recognizes the importance of cancer prevention, and encourages all citizens to lower their risk of cancer by committing to the following actions, promote awareness and encourage others to learn about cancer risk factors, symptoms, and preventative measures. Support, support early detection by urging family and friends to undergo regular screenings. Advocate healthy habits such as maintaining a balanced diet, staying physically active, and avoiding and limiting the use of tobacco. And whereas we support cancer research initiatives and, uh, commend community-based organizations like the Cancer Resource Center of the Desert, who provide compassionate support, guidance, and education to cancer patients in Imperial Valley. Now, uh, therefore, I, Mayor Robert Alpera, on behalf of the City, Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February twenty twenty four as Cancer Prevention Month in the City of Imperial, and call upon community organizations, schools, and healthcare providers to collaborate in spreading awareness and providing resources to enhance cancer prevention efforts. Passed and adopted on this twenty first, uh, day of February twenty twenty four, regular meeting, Imperial City Council. She is.
I'd like to say a few words.
Oh, absolutely.
Just do, I would give my.
No, no worries.
Way before, uh, first of all, thank you for the recognition that this is a very, uh, important element in our community and for the health of our community. As a, as an intervention service within our community, the Cancer Resource Center provides, it's critical, uh, for, not only for prevention, there are some elements that can prevent, but it's most important is early detection. That is where cure can occur, and I think the fact that the city is raising awareness for this is very important. Uh, many of the people we serve are diagnosed late stage, um, stage three or stage four terminal status, but at some point, they were early stage, or stage zero, one, or two. And it's because of those preventive, um, actions people take, going to the doctor for their annual exams, men and women, uh, is very important, and, uh, it, it's something that many people feel that, uh, there's a higher rate of cancer in Imperial County. We don't have the population for that, except in the area of breast cancer. There are two areas, uh, in the north end, one in the north end and one in the south end, that, uh, that they have identified as statistically significantly higher rate of late-stage breast cancer in Raleigh, Baltimore, in that Patriot Island, as well as, uh, Calixto and Ophelia. At some point, those women were early stage, and for different reasons, people, uh, neglect to, uh, go to the doctor earlier to, to hopefully find something early, but early detection is key. And so our community has such a strong work ethic and family orientation. Many times women will put their family first and themselves last, and the same goes for men. They are there to, to work and support their families, and many times they like to go to the doctor. So this cancer prevention proclamation, I find, uh, very important. Most importantly, early detection saves lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom, don't see.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. With that. Thank you very much, moving on to item B, consent agenda. All items appearing on the city agenda will be adopted by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request any, that would be considered separately, that item would be taken up, determined by the mayor. With that.
Mr. Mayor, uh, board number one one five seven oh three should be handled separately with, with, uh, you as mayor not participating in that.
Okay.
Approve of that board.
Okay. So with that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, please vote.
Councilmember Barnard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Obeso Martinez? Mayor Pro Tim Tucker?
Yes.
And Mayor Alpera.
All abstain.
Motion carries four zero with one abstain from Mayor Alpera.
Thank you. With that, moving on to item, uh, public hearing for item C two, public. Oh, sorry, we need to make the change, sorry.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, is it one one five seven zero seven?
Three.
Seven zero three.
Zero.
Okay.
Got a motion in seconds, sorry. Please vote.
Councilmember Barnard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tucker?
Yes.
And Mayor Alpera.
All abstain.
Motion carries four one with one abstain from Mayor Alpera.
All right, now we can move on to public hearings. So now moving on to item C, public hearing, C two. Public hearing to authorize the permanent housing, local housing allocation program and adoption of resolution two zero two four dash zero six. And I'll open up the public hearing at seven.
So before I begin the staff report, there is a revision to the documentation that you received, it's the five-year plan, and it's in front of you. The revisions are highlighted in proof for quick reference. Overall, whole and allocation of the funds and how it's going to be utilized and activity did not change. What was included was the revenue numbers and, and the percentage of AMI that were going to be used for the housing. And with that, the item you have in front of you is for the permanent local housing allocation program. It is programmed under the State of California SB two. It was programmed created to fund local housing, low-income homeless. What we're looking to do is we're in non-entitlement jurisdiction under this program, so we are allocated funds for the five years. It's not competitive, but we are required to submit an application to receive the funds. So that's what this is, that's what we're doing now, is requesting a resolution to submit our application, approve the five-year plan that's in front of you. So it says five years, the report you have in front of you or that five-year plan is actually down to four, so we're actually, actually doing twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, because twenty twenty-nine was put back into the multi-house, twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen was put back into the multi-housing program because we missed the deadline to submit those applications. And as an informative issue or item is, we have to be compliant with our housing element as well as our annual progress reports. We are compliant with housing element, our annual progress reports were turned in, they're pending the approval from HCD, so that might be something that causes us not to qualify, but we're submitting on the twenty ninth because that's the deadline, and we're gonna see if they kick it back or if there's any issues with that. Um, other than that, with the item, there is actually no fiscal impact at this point, because all we're doing is submitting the resolution and application in terms also of the project itself. There's no CECL requirements or environmental issues, because again, it's just a report. There's no project actually initiated just yet, we'll come back if there is going to be a report or a project that requires that, and that's the same with the fiscal funding. Once we get the funds, we'll come back, we'll do the appropriate allocation, create the budget. This is on a reimbursement basis. With the years that we have, we are entitled to four hundred and six thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars at this point, because they haven't released the amount for the twenty twenty-three calendar year. That will come out in the notebook for twenty twenty-four, and then once that comes out, we'll have to go back and do another application. And so you know the five-year plan you have in front of you is what we'd be approving, but it doesn't mean to say that that's what we have to stick to. We're able to amend it later on down the road, and we would just follow the same process. We would have to do another draft, we would put it out for a ten-day public comment, come back for an amended resolution and amended plan. As of right now, we have one activity listed, which is the rehabilitation for our low-income or moderate affordable housing community, and that's the one that we're looking to do now. But like I said, you can add activities to that later on down the road with this amendment process. Other than that, I don't know if you guys have any new questions or, or, I'm sorry, the distribution of the way we're looking at the funds, ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the funds per that annual year will go towards the actual improvements and rehab, and five percent is going to be utilized for administrative cost in terms of, if there's contract management, anything we're doing in-house or staff, we can get that reimbursement as well, so we did a ninety-five-five split. And there's a temporary, if it's less than ten percent that we're changing, we don't have to go back to HCD for the approval, but if we're changing more than ten percent, then that's when it does initiate and kick in the, the amendment process. One thing too, I do want to say that I have here is, on that five-year plan, if you look at the table below, the twenty twenty allocation doesn't show a five percent, but that's just because there was an error in the HCD application. It wasn't an error on our end, and they've already been notified of that.
So we'll be reimbursed that five percent?
Yes, it'll, it'll be an automatic because we're listing that that's what we want, but it was their application that wasn't calculating it correctly.
Any questions?
Um, I have a couple of questions and a comment.
Yes.
For starters, just so you might want to double check, it's not reimbursement, it's advance, they'll advance you a hundred percent.
Okay.
Um, but, what, if we're gonna be, are we, is it intent right now that the twenty twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two will all be used for this housing rehab?
Yes.
Um, another thing to be cautious of is your twenty twenty funding's gonna have an April twenty-five deadline. So you need to make sure that, uh, if that funding's gonna be utilized for it, that we're pushing this through and doing the plans and getting it approved by council, because they're gonna want a hundred percent commitment of that funding, and you'll need to, um, submit your draw to them by, uh, February twenty-eighth of next year. Of a hundred percent, for a hundred percent of the funding, for that one year, the other three used to have, they, 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 every, they all in, uh, five years after it's allocated on April thirtieth, so April thirtieth is the expenditure deadline. So we need to draw, you can, you can draw it, and you don't have to have it expended at the city level, but as far as the state, it needs to all be drawn down by April thirty of the next year for the twenty twenty.
Any other questions? With any public comment? Seeing none, I'll, uh, close the hearing at, uh, seven eighteen. Council discussion. For the extension. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero six.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second. Motion in a second, please vote.
Councilmember Barnard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Alpera?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to act items, D one, approve the revised site plan for Highway eighty-six communication project, page one. With Mr. Mora.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, uh, as you may already know, um, City of Imperial, working with Chad Ryan on the Highway eighty-six communication project, uh, staff review, um, the, the concept that has been approved by the city council, uh, but we are proposing some changes to the plan. Uh, on UACD, D, it was approved, and UACD, K, it's what we are proposing. Uh, one of the, the concept that it is approved, uh, it will basically block off Fourth Street and Sixth Street, but we are proposing is popping those up and adding some left turn, uh, lanes as well. Um, we are, uh, that will improve the circulation and, and, uh, and hopefully we start up construction by May twenty twenty-four, uh, people through this council. And I'll send for any questions that may have.
Any questions? See no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make motion to approve.
Got a motion? Motion in a second, please vote.
Councilmember Barnard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tucker?
Yes.
And Mayor Alpera?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, well, look forward to, we'll start April, you said? May. Just make me sure. Okay, you know, it's, it's okay, I could try to get one more month. All right, moving on to item B two, approve the purchase of two, uh, purchase of two Imperial, uh, welcome signs. This goes to Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, staff has secured updated quote requests in, uh, previous meetings. We've also attached some additional information just for your viewing. We, uh, are asking a few things that, uh, for this item, one, the approval to purchase, the, uh, two signs for the welcome to Imperial, uh, welcoming, and then also, uh, if you look at your packet page, pages for the, for the drawing start in the font, it is outlined, and the selection of font and color, and the color palettes are attached to the packet as well on one of the pages after the last image. So if you look at closely, the fonts are different, it, it does make a difference once you paint the font or the lettering and how it looks, uh, typically at our park signs, they are a deep blue. So if you want to follow that same color scheme, uh, that's fine, I just think, what you guys prefer, the order would be J approved.
You answered my question, I was gonna say, what, what color are the parks?
Yeah, yeah. So with that, questions, I know I like, regards to the font, I like the last one.
What's the font that's on our park signs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which one?
The first.
The first one?
Yeah, it's a, it's a blockier, thicker font, uh, on our park signs.
You want to just keep the same?
Yeah.
Okay, just keep the same.
I like.
Yeah.
You want to keep the blue, the blue the same as the, just to keep it all uniform?
This way, we all have the same stuff.
For these quotes, did you get three quotes?
We went out for three quotes, we tried a few local vendors, um, I don't want to put their name out there, obviously, because, uh, a lot of, we, uh, went out the first time before we came to council, uh, we did get a lot of follow-up questions on what, what we wanted. Uh, we even gave them an example of the drawings that Precast, uh, submitted as an example template. Uh, we're still waiting to date on quotes from local vendors.
Okay.
So these were, Precast was the most responsive, or the only responsive, uh, submitted quote.
What about for your other?
Uh, we stayed local with those, um, these are all local vendors, uh, that we can actually go in and, and pick up and not have a freight charge.
But did you get three quotes?
There is, uh, with the landscape and the rock, there's only one vendor in the valley that I'm, that I'm aware of. Yes. No, we, we just kind of put the, the pricing table, uh, together for council to see what the overview of the, the cost of the project would be.
Yeah, there is local vendors that do have those.
And we have some flexibility in those, uh, where we, we, and, and if we, we can get that from you, if you have that other name, we can, we can shop around on that, where that goes to.
It's fine, just in the future. But I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion? Second, please vote.
Councilmember Barnard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Alpera?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Barnard, it's like Christmas for you.
I know.
Oh.
Only two? Uh, item, moving on to item D three, uh, authorize disposal of surplus equipment for police department with the captain Sheffield.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, the item before you is, uh, the purpose of this question that the, for the, uh, close to the council consideration to declare the department's current list of outdated and obsolete equipment we have, uh, surplus. If declared, uh, the equipment will be either auctioned, donated, or destroyed. Um, a lot of it is definitely outdated, so it could be destroyed. Um, the items that can be donated to, uh, agencies such as, uh, Mexicali Police, that, that will happen. We also have other avenues that we can store credit some of our vendors, uh, through, so we'll be looking at all these.
That's a pretty extensive list. Want to do some cleaning out?
Yes. Some sprinkling.
You mean these XDS can be used as paperweights?
We're actually keeping, uh, three of them as doomsday radios, just in case communications go out, we can, uh, at least have something. But yeah, we, well, I guess we could use those paperweights, to be honest with you.
That's all.
Yes.
Any questions on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
A motion, second, please vote.
Councilmember Barnard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tucker?
Yes.
And Mayor Alpera?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item D four, approve the adopt quarterly budget update report for the second quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, ending on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, with Mr. Montecas, Insuranis Services Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmen, councilmembers, um, this is, uh, bringing up the resolution for Q two fiscal year twenty twenty-four, uh, to adopt any amendments we have done to the fiscal budget. Uh, with the staff reports, uh, we have included, uh, Mr. John Arretta, who's gonna be a soon, uh, former, uh, interim director, and myself, staff reports including the resolution, um, the revenue and expenditure schedules, a five-year historical comparison, and a position control schedule which has no change, and approval of purchase of a payment of fifty thousand that has been approved prior year. Um, we come up with a, a preparation that come on summarizes the eighty pages I have attached, uh, to the resolution. So if I can go off, I'll go ahead and set that first. Any questions? Okay. Yeah, quarter two fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, which encompasses, uh, October to December. Okay, um, I won't read through all the slides, uh, which is, uh, not too much time, but, uh, this is summary. Uh, basically, Q one, uh, for Mr. Arera that implemented in, on quarter one, so I'll just, uh, we'll keep going through the system and adding to the updating budget, so, um, first line is very, uh, alternative times, alternate times, uh, they are coming. We have, uh, recently had, uh, HDL agency update report itself, so they, based on that, um, meeting and their forecasts, which are pretty accurate, uh, we are, you can see the bottom line, the city is on track. However, one leading economic indicator that's linking yellow is sales tax, mainly, uh, car sales. So that's where, uh, which requires, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar downward revision at Q two. It's just the forecast, but still, we're going with the recommendation. Uh, um, also, with greater compliance with our purchase. With greater compliance with our purchasing policy that we're trying to implement, uh our fiscal budget uh should remain in fact to Q four. Any questions on this side? Um Three of the budgets, uh three of the Q two budget items uh that are we are amendment is a one time adjustment of hundred and one thousand six hundred dollars. For Darrell Bethencourt, uh municipal third consulting services that are terminated in Q two. So this was not uh currently in the budget, so this is a one time expense. Uh number two is what previously mentioned downward revision of two hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred to sales tax revenue estimate. And number three, it's approve of fifty thousand for C S C F D equipment carryover budget from Q four. This item was already approved by councils back on uh April uh Q four, April fifth of twenty twenty three. So uh we're just rolling over the budget so we can uh complete and buy the, it was a lift, fifty five foot lift. So those are the only three revisions done to Q two. Moving on. Um budgetary net revenue for it, um you, okay, that should be Q two. Uh the red value, it's um ongoing revenues. Um for Q two, the red the net revenue is negative two hundred and seventeen thousand after we're drawing down the sales tax decrease. Uh this excludes the one time uh charge of the hundred and thousand for Mr. Bethencourt. Uh but I mentioned this again, it's just a forecast that we're decreasing the sales tax. Next slide. Cash bases, uh net revenue at Q two. Uh for Q two cash rates, uh net revenue is negative three point three point three fifty five million. Which includes the four million transfer out during Q one. Those are the ones that were established for the one time for the These are the.
I'd be happy to assist.
Senator.
Okay, thank you, John.
Yeah, basically, the last uh quarter revision of the budget, the council authorized transferring of four million dollars Uh to establish a fully funded vehicle replacement fund, two million dollars. Uh the res management fund, one million dollars, and the uh IT um uh capital And enterprise fund, another million dollars. So those were just one time transfers that are easy to remove from the standards.
Oh, they're done. Sorry. It's a vehicle equipment, res management, and ninety bucks. Thank you, John. Right, next slide. Um the twenty five percent emergency reserve that um that is uh recommended by the G O F, which is the government finance officers association. Um after the four million already um explained in the previous slide, um we still have a carry a decrease. General fund reserve that goes down to four point five million. Uh which is uh very conservative this time. This is uh twenty six point five percent of our annual operating expense. Which is equivalent to a three months of uh operating reserves. So we're well in uh over the two month uh recommendation by the D F O, D F O A. And this is at Q two.
Go ahead and say ninety eight special, man.
Yes. Next slide, uh purchase order and commerce project that was mentioned previously. Um currently, the city purchase orders are documented by the city to a vendor to control purchasing of goods and services as well to monitor the city budget. With up to the minute uh balances. Um right now, uh our goal is to reboot the city uh purchasing policy and procedures. So our quarterly and annual budgets reflect a more accurate in time amounts. Uh so we have a control of uh checks that have been already Um written down, given to uh vendors, but not yet uh Deposited or checked to their accounts or any major projects that we're still waiting to expand. And to keep control of purchases by all city departments. This is something uh that uh we'll be wanting to establish before the fiscal year ends. So probably cannot be next word. Fund balance, cash reserves, uh the general fund has a four point five million as previously mentioned. That's at the end of Q two. And the pool cash for the city as a whole, it's uh forty seven million, uh so forty seven point one million. All city fund, including general fund and non general fund. This is a five year comparison for Q two. As you can see, uh excluding those four million previously mentioned, our Q two for fiscal year twenty three twenty four, it's uh net revenue. Uh this is something that um it has already been pretty established by Mr. Arretta, uh changing from a daily posting instead of a monthly posting. Which uh has our revenues up to date. Moving on. Um enterprise water funds, uh which is one of our most significant funds. Uh you can see fiscal year uh still uh never been positive. Um Q two budget was a versus actual fifty ending twenty three, excludes capital improvements, which is one point four million. Uh bond principal standing at Q two for uh water fund is ten point six million. Uh to wastewater?
I have a question.
Yes.
How often do we make the bond payments?
The bond payments are made uh once a year and twice in principle correct, right, John?
Yes, we make uh one, every six months, we make a principal payment and then we make an interest payment.
I'm I'm just curious. Do you know how how much the bond payments are?
Uh once, um The two fifty five principal and the other is five eighty, five sixty five, five six five. That's principal, plus interest. Which with interest, I I just reviewed this today, once four seventeen and the other one should be nine eighty nine approximately. So for wastewater, uh Also, um selfie for Q two. Uh it's been a trend, I I think that's um keeps going with the trend, uh bond principal payments uh for this one. It's a total of sending or eighteen million, two point six. I don't know the payments on that one.
I'm I'm just curious.
No, 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 well, I'll I'll get that information for you. This is a balance sheet for enterprise balance sheets. Um The enterprise funds do not report fund balances like general fund. Enterprise funds are managed more like a private business. So we use accounting terms like working capital, uh retained earnings. A detailed balance sheet analysis of the water and wastewater will be presented uh with audited financial statements. Um the liquidity to show the city council reserves available for emergencies and financing operations and projects in the upcoming year. The wa- the water fund catch lines total seven million at Q two, which is a twelve percent increase from Q one. And the wastewater fund ba- fund cash balance is eleven point seven million, which is so it's also a decrease of six percent at Q one. Uh working.
Uh you taking a moment for a second, Senator?
Yeah.
To answer Ms. Burn, Councilmember Bernhard's uh question, uh the the wastewater uh bond payment uh for the first half of the year was one million one hundred and twenty five thousand. Yes.
Moving on to the C F Ds, um we have the six C F Ds. Um these are uh in April administered six C F Ds with defined financial results at Q two. Uh most are negative since we received uh revenues in January, so by Q three, those should be on the positive side. And these are the C F D fund balances at Q two. Uh which all reflect a positive number with total of five hundred and eighty one uh dollars for Q two.
Can you go back to the previous one, please?
Yes.
I mean, they're showing mine, but they do have funds in the account, right?
Correct. The fund balances, the fund balance, which is basically the resource for this, do have a
Why is it showing so much negative?
This is, this is uh working on the on the on the budget on fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
So which is, those are the budget, the budget expenses that we have uh that it was approved when it was done with the budget. Like the expenses that wanna go to maintaining those uh C F Ds.
But the revenue comes in during January, so uh we get the first major installment of special taxes for the C F Ds in January. So it'll it'll become positive by January.
We have already received those uh installments, but this is up to December thirty first.
Thank you.
Yes. Again, this is the combat of combinations for each uh C F D. Moving on. Some pending um items at Q two. I think this is a continuous of um Q one for the Mayfield Fund sixty two. Uh the number two S T P L fund seventy six, showing a deficit of six hundred K, ten fifteen. And five eighty six, showing a deficit of two nineteen. Additional funds with smaller deficits come to a total of three hundred and eighty. So this are need, still need to be um our resolution. Uh come on, how we're gonna clean up deficits, deficits.
If I can comment on that, Victor? So as we told the council over the last uh quarterly reports, that um we've been doing cleanup of the accounting system over the last year. And um there are still a few of the city funds that carry uh negative numbers, but these go back over ten or fifteen years. And uh we have talked about um uh cleaning these up uh and and having You know, bringing restoring this deficit number to to a balanced number. But we can't do that until we finish that reconciliation. But uh the point is that um that The question is who's gonna pay for these deficits, right? Uh these are transportation funds. These are not um general fund operating funds, so But 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 we think that hopefully the uh Mayfield C F D resolution workout, whatever happens there, that'll be a positive. And hopefully that off- offsets the deficits on the other, the S T P L fund, the per capita funds and so forth. But this is kind of a difficult item, but we've been putting it on here so you're aware that there's a potential fiscal impact to the tune of um Uh probably a million dollars here. Uh but these have to be cleaned up, and I think Victor is gonna be providing direction on how to clean that up over the coming months. Um so anyways, we just making you aware that these are uh you know, uh contingencies that we have to clean up in the books that go back many, many years.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Uh by intuition, uh For fiscal year twenty twenty four, the impairment continues on target at Q two and in December thirty first twenty twenty three. Uh we need to remain alert, uh watching leading economic indicators like our self tax Uh revenues and our lagging economic indicators like our property tax revenues. Uh under the new quarterly budget update program, staff will continue to monitor and propose And propose budget adjustments to keep with the city council inform on the performance of its solution for spending plan and beyond. Uh staff will return with a Q three quarterly update, uh hopefully by the second, I mean, April. So that's it. Any questions?
Do you have a question for, just my knowledge and I think I must, unless she's done some better research than me. These uh bond issues, it looks like we had three bond issues. What were, what projects did they find?
Which, which one?
There was two bond issues under the water fund and one under wastewater. What were the bond issues for?
Yeah, if I can try and address that one. I was gonna call Jackie Loper, but um But he's gone. Uh but uh it it was various uh water infrastructure Um uh projects uh that I I don't have a specific details of what they were, but um but every Those bond funds are completely expended now, and um those go back to twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen, I believe, is the years of those issues. Um but um there were a number of various water projects, but we can come back at Q three and provide you a specific list. Victor and I are working on the five year uh uh capital improvement program budget. That has to come forward together with the fiscal year twenty twenty five operating budget. And we'll provide you an accounting uh of those bond funds along with all the other capital projects That we finished, that the city has completed, as well as those that are proposed for the coming fiscal year.
My knowledge, I mean, I know that I understand those bonds were issued some time ago.
Yes.
I was just curious to know what it was that they funded that was worth continuing to think for.
So John, one of, one of the bonds that we paid in twenty sixteen was the initial building of the G A Cs at the water plant. Number two in twenty nineteen was the addition of the expansion of the G A Cs at the water plant, and the wastewater one was the sewer plant. Bonds that we uh for building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
I have a question too.
When you go down into the nitty gritty of your seventy two pages.
Yeah.
Notice that when it comes to like incomes on impact fees, it's all zeroed out. So Get any impact fees, like?
Do you have a specific uh page number, Ms. Berwin?
Hey, one of them is on page eleven, uh thirty three, where it shows the actuals. The budget actuals from the four to five year comparison. And it's uh revenue Forty two fifty through forty two fifty six.
Yeah.
Page thirty three? Okay.
Under the general fund. Yeah.
Well, we no longer uh, we no longer account for any of these impact fees within the general fund. They're now accounted for in special funds. Um but uh we didn't present those in this report. We tried to keep it a little more brief. But we can definitely come back at Q three. I mean, I have all the balances here for all the impact fees. But those are um, you know, it's a pretty thick report, but we we have a lot of other balance sheets that have Uh uh funds that we primarily focus on the on the uh general fund, enterprise funds and C F D funds. But there's a number of other funds out there that uh we can come back at Q three with a breakout. But yeah, we no longer, we don't account for impact fees in the general fund anymore. Those have been broken out Into their own funds, and I believe we have five or six different development impact fee funds. Um but uh I can provide you balances on any one that you have in particular in mind?
I'm curious as to, you know, how much revenues is actually bringing in for those five years.
Uh yeah, that definitely, that's something we would have to assemble because um Um it wasn't, it was a lot more detail on this report, but we can come back at Q three specifically include a section That deals with development impact fees and give you the five year history, because I know that When we do the uh, the government code sixty six thousand report, the assembly bill sixteen hundred, you know, those are the the diff funds. Uh we are supposed to project out um what capital improvements we're gonna be um incurring every five years. And therefore we calculate the amount that we charge, um, new development, uh, for, for those fees. And I know we're working on doing an updated report to comply with government code sixty six thousand. I think it's government code sixty six thousand and one. Uh, but we can include that. I mean, it's timely. It's time to bring that forward. I think it's been five years since we looked at the, uh, impact fees. And we have to look and recalculate them, but they really should align with the five year C I P. And Ms. Burnworth, I specifically recall you asking at the last quarterly report in Q one, you asked about the five year C I P. That is, that's part and parcel with the impact fees that we calculate for the building industry folks that wanna make sure that we're, that we're spending the money for what we're collecting it. Yes, 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 sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? John, or Victor, I just needed real quick clarification, making sure it's not a typo.
Yes.
On, uh, read Q two, Q two budget items fiscal year twenty twenty four, you have a one time budget adjustment of a hundred and one thousand, uh, six hundred dollars for Daryl.
Yes.
Next page, you have a one time of a hundred and ten thousand.
Title, sorry.
I think that's that one. It was one ten and one oh one, I think.
Yeah, which is the real one?
One oh one.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any other questions?
Make the motion to, uh, stop rotation number two thousand twenty four, that's zero five, the City Council, the City Imperial California, bending the municipal budget for second quarter of fiscal year that begins July one, twenty twenty three and ends June third, twenty twenty four, creating new city funds in the general.
You had a motion by Councilmember Burnworth? And a second by Councilmember Martinez, please vote.
Councilmember Burnworth, yes. Councilmember Mendoza, yes. Councilmember Vito Martinez, yes. Mayor Protim Tucker, yes. Mayor Apurano, yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much, John, Victor. Moving on to item E, reports, department reports. We'll start with, uh, on this side, Mr. Mora. Mr. Lopez?
If you, um, I wanna thank, uh, all the Parks and Rec staff for all their hard work. Uh, this last Saturday, we had our Color Fest charity run. Uh, we were able to raise through the registrations, uh, three thousand dollars to help, uh, humane society. From what I understand, they were able to cover one of their large outstanding vet bills with that donation. And then also Walmart and a few other stores in the county donated, uh, some items. So it was upwards in excess of five thousand dollars we were able to raise, so for the humane society. Uh, and then the other thing is, uh, market calendars, March twenty third. We have one of the biggest, uh, downtown events that we usually have during our season, which is Trisip. So, uh, we want, we expect to see, uh, all the council members there and then everybody from the public to have a support given.
Thank you. No, Alex?
I did the report.
Alright. Yep.
Uh, just wanna remind the community, the entire county, I guess for that matter, but having our own, like, our fairs coming up. So we want our community to be aware that it's gonna be some hectic traffic the next coming weekends, uh, please slow down, please be aware of each other and, and just be patient, uh, throughout all of it.
Good, thank you.
Uh, good evening. There was a structure fire just outside the city limits this afternoon on Belford Road. Um, there was a mutually received by, uh, Alcentro Electrico. And, um, the flag, it was a total lot, one person displaced by frost is helping us take care of that. Um, the last other thing is, um, I had the pleasure the last two days to be in a training set mayor. Not really pleasurable, but.
It was fun.
But he, uh, he kept us up. We were doing a ULC training the last couple of days, getting ready for the next tour. All that, thanks.
Thank you. I'm with this.
Hi, just wanted to say I did attend the color run. It was really nice to see everybody that went. Now I actually ran the, the two mile, everybody seemed surprised about. I was able to sneak into the V I P area by being Christina's plus one. So, Cory, thank you for working. But it was, it was a good event. It was nice. The music was great. So, heart, awesome job, that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Marita?
Mr. Mayor Council, I, I, I would just like to say that, I would like to say that I fully participated in Color Fest.
We saw you.
Did you go around the block, did you go around the block again, like last year?
I, I, I took it to a new level. Prior year, I took a shortcut. This year, I, I didn't even take a shortcut.
He went through the veg and his set.
Well, I said I fully participated, but I, I partially participated in, in the other things that they've had to offer. And weather was, weather was perfect. And it looked like everybody had.
Thank you. Uh, we'll start on this side. How about, uh, ready? Oh, alright. Uh, city clerk? Alright, so we'll start with Ms. Martinez.
Oh, I attended the color run. I took my dog. He was fun. Um, no, it's a great event, great venue, great location. Um, you know, we change venues. It's always hit miss. Sometimes you never know what's gonna happen, but there was a lot of people that turned it off. It was really good. We had some food, some new vendors out there, some new things, items out there. And it was a really great time. And yes, beautiful weather. Everybody had a really great time and was able to enjoy the weather. I attended the airshow gala, that was an event as well. And besides that, that morning, I did attend the best of four and five K to support the autism. Uh, so I didn't run that either. I was volunteering with my, with my, um, hermanitas, the hermana de Imperial Valley. And then our boy scout troop, I took them out there to volunteer too. So I was doing double duty with those kids, trying to watch these teenagers and those teenagers. But, um, there was a lot of things happening on Saturday. So it was really great to be able to attend all those events. So thank you to the Parks Department again, wonderful event and all the the workers that were out there late at night, putting everything away. It's much appreciated. You guys worked very, very hard to put on all these events. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Bro, what?
National territory.
And the same, the gala was, uh, beautiful, wonderful and very well put on this year. It was cold as could be, but, um, but it was, it was a very nice event. And thank you again to the, as everybody else has mentioned, park staff for, for putting on a great event. Unfortunately, I was only able to join the last about forty five minutes of it. But can I say that, uh, we need to keep that band on rotation? That's a good band.
A lot of good feedback coming in.
Yeah, that, that was some really good music. Um, the only non-City Imperial related thing I have coming up is I'm gonna have the opportunity next week to ta, attend the C P R S conference, the California Parks and Recreation Society Conference from Tuesday through Friday. I've never in all my years working with the City of Alcentro have I been able to attend that, but we had someone drop out, so they let me, uh, take a spot for the good and refund. And so I've, although I'm attending for my day job, I think I'm gonna be able to bring a lot of information back for my seat here. So I'm really excited to attend that.
It's great to hear. Mr. Tucker?
I'm good.
I'll report on James. He had some awesome shoes.
A good time. So, yeah, uh, also attended the gala. Great, a lot of people, uh, good event. Um, Mr. Tucker, myself, uh, Mr. Marita and Mr. Cavelo got to sit in on two on two with I I D on Friday. I think that went very, very well. Um, collaboration common, making sure we all work together to, you know, take care of all issues or things that we need to take care of within our city with both agencies. So I think there is an open dialogue there and I thought it went very, very well. So I do look forward to more two on twos with, uh, other agencies to make sure that we collaborate, anything that affects our city. Um, did notice a couple of things out in the city. So our Public Works, thank you very much for doing the cleanup after the rain. I saw them out cleaning up weeds, cleaning up trash along the highway. So, uh, big thanks for that. Appreciate it. Uh, Color Fest, Color Fest was awesome. Uh, enjoyed it. I got there a little early and watched all the stuff going on. Uh, I did not run. I did walk my entire two laps, but I, I did it. Um, yeah, the music was awesome. Music was great. Um, I'm glad that we were able to help, uh, the Humane Society, uh, Imperial County with the needs that they have. And so I, I did get, uh, stopped by community members from that area, explained, and they expressed to me that they really enjoyed being there within their neighborhood. I was expecting to hear, you know, the negatives, but it was more positives than I did hear any neg, I heard no negatives. So, um, I think it was great. So Parks and Rec, all the departments had helped out, police, fire and everybody there. I know fireworks are manning our first aid station. So thank you guys very much for all the hard work. And I think that's what makes us stand out from all the other cities that we, we are a city that works together. Uh, we are all, all there for one thing. So with that, um, definitely, uh, look forward to our next event. Um, hope to see you guys at the fair. Be careful. Joy and with that, uh, any other comments? With that, I'll adjourn this meeting eight oh one.